Okay, welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, March first, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. And happy birthday to Nebraska. It's one hundred and fifty-fifth birthday today, so what I understand? I don't know, that's good to take a vote on that, so it's probably gonna fail. Nope, the answer is no. All right, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd stand for that, followed by the invocation, Pastor Fred Simon from Pilgrim Lutheran Church at twenty-three-eleven Fairview Road is here for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our gracious Father, mighty God, you are the God of peace and you desire that we live in peace, especially with each other. While the world is often in discord and even war, help this place to be a place where we acknowledge that we are here to make our community better and a safe place to live. Be our guide as plans are discussed and decisions are made. Help us to work as a united team for the goals of this community. Help us to learn to live in peace with one another, even when there are disagreements. Show us that your hand is at work in our lives and all that we do. Be present with us this evening and bless this meeting. We pray this all in the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Simon. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welsh.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Councilwoman Welch was louder, no, Stinson, sorry. Councilwoman Welch was louder, but not first. Let me change that. Okay. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we move item fifteen B right to right after eleven.
Right, right before.
Right before eleven.
Okay.
Second.
Can't even read it.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister to move item fifteen B right before item eleven. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I have a motion by Cook, seconded by Stinson to approve the agenda as amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. That'll take us to item number seven, special presentations. Tonight, we have, um, this is kind of the fun part of the job. You get to recognize the special people in the community and doesn't, this is nothing that's given out all the time, so it's, uh, it's pretty What's up? Oh, sorry, got ahead of myself. Excited for, excited for Garrett, I guess. Item five A, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Have a motion. Councilman Stinson.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now I'll pick up where I left off. Okay, special proclamation this evening and, uh, Garrett Grice is in the audience. He is a four-time state wrestling champion, attended Bellevue East. Uh, he is the first one to, uh, repeat it four times at Bellevue East. And I believe he's the thirty-fifth person in the state of Nebraska to, uh, to have such a feat. Uh, totally amazing. I've known Garrett for, uh, well, my kids, my son went to Fairview, so since fifth grade, kindergarten, I guess, so they've been a, um, amazing family to, to grow up with, with my son. And, uh, I've got to watch Garrett grow and he, this couldn't be for a better, a better kid. He's very respectful and, um, just an all-around great kid, obviously a great athlete. But if you would come to the podium, Garrett, I'll present you with the proclamation. Okay, so after stating that, you're the first one that does it four times. One of our council members did it two times, Jerry McCaw. His brother did it three times, so you're in good company. I tried to get him to come out here and wrestle, do a little demonstration, but he said absolutely not. So. So from the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor, this is a proclamation. Whereas Bellevue East Boys Wrestling, Garrett Grice wins his fourth Class A State Wrestling Championship in four years. And whereas on the last day of the two thousand twenty-two N S A A State Wrestling Tournament, under the bright lights and thunderous crowd, Garrett Grice did what he does best one last time in high school, win. Whereas Garrett will go down as one of the all-time greats in Nebraska history as he finishes his high school career as the all-class career takedown record holder with a win-loss record of a hundred and ninety-six to one. He also became just the thirty-fifth wrestler in Nebraska history to become a four-time state champion. And whereas longtime Bellevue East Wrestling Coach Todd Porter summed Garrett's career up nicely by saying, "I don't think you will ever meet a wrestler who works harder, has more class and charisma, and is just a great person off the mat. He is the first four-time state champion in Bellevue history and I'm super happy about the way he has represented high school and, and community. We wish him best of luck as he continues his wrestling and academic career next fall at the University of Virginia. And now therefore I, Rusty Hike, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, hereby proclaim March first, two thousand twenty-two as Garrett Grice Day in Bellevue and do hereby urge all of our citizens to recognize the merits of his accomplishments." Make it one more picture. I want, I want the other state wrestler down here too to get pictures here.
McCaw wouldn't wrestle him because he'd probably lose.
George, did you want any in this, Kim?
Um, I would just like to say I love Bellevue. I've always, um, I've, I grew up here my whole life and I've always gotten treated really well, so super thankful for the city of Bellevue and I know you guys play a huge part in it, so I'm thankful for you guys too.
Thank you, Garrett. Thanks, Garrett. You're a class act. You're gonna, you're gonna go far. All right, now we'll move on and you certainly don't have to stick around for the meeting, but you're welcome to if you want. Item nine, approved citizen communications. We did not receive any. Item ten, liquor licenses. Did not receive any of those either. Item fifteen B per amended agenda. Resolution two zero two-two dash zero seven, request to approve the redevelopment plan for Lot Five, Edward Warren Edition and Tax Lot H two, located in the southwest quarter of Section sixteen, Township thirteen north and Range thirteen east of the six P M. Sarpy County, Nebraska, applicant TKC Chandler LLC. General location, West Chandler Road and South Thirty-Sixth Street. And I will open fifteen A up for public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to speak regarding the redevelopment plan, please come forward. Just state your name and address, please, for the record and then sign in.
My name is Connie Colton. My address is seventy-six-ten South Thirty-Fifth Street, so sign in. Is that next?
Yep, please. Yep, for the record, public record.
Okay, I was prepared to speak, I thought, on what was twelve C, but then you moved this item up in the agenda. Are those two connected, the fifteen B?
We'll still have twelve C after we have the fifteen.
Can I ask for clarification because the paper that I received from the city mentions numbers that I didn't see on here? So I want to make sure which property fifteen B is talking about and which property twelve C is talking about.
Same property, right? Yeah, it's still the same property. Fifteen B is the approval for the redevelopment plan and, uh, twelve C will be the request to rezone, so you can, you can certainly speak on, at this point in time, because it is on that property.
Okay.
Yep.
So the house where I live on Thirty-Fifth Street, um, is two houses off of Chandler Road. I've been there for thirty-five years, have always felt very safe in my neighborhood. In fact, we didn't even use the locks on the doors in the house for the first twenty years we lived there. Recently, there have been, um, changes in the neighborhood. Twice in the last six weeks, I've gone out, you know, I'm one of those people that I'm just way too trusting. I've gone out of my house and found that somebody had gone through my car as it was parked in the driveway because I didn't lock my doors. There's nothing in there to take. I figured it was cheaper to let somebody rifle my car than it is to pay for replacing a window. So I just go out and I find all of my personal things dumped all over the car, my box of tissues and whatever, not a big deal. But it goes to the safety and the feeling of safety that you have in your home. So now I've started locking my car for the first time in thirty-five years. I've noticed the property across, um, across Chandler, the lots one through thirty-eight that I think is what, what it's listed as, is set to be rezoned for, um, not single-family dwellings, but now duplexes that are going in. And I understand that we have a, a dire need for affordable housing. I get that. But I'm concerned for three different reasons. One, the way the plan is laid out, there will be two entrances added off of Chandler, not so very far apart, and there's a U-shaped design for this. Being where I'm at, um, I see the traffic back up on Chandler. I really hope that we don't end up with the same mess that happens at Thirty-Sixth and Harrison Street, once these streets go in. At the times when school starts and school lets out, both the high school, the middle school and the elementary school in that area, Bryan High, Bryan Middle and, um, the elementary right on Chandler, traffic backs up horribly. You add two more exits coming off of Chandler in that U shape, we end up with cars that are gonna be backed up forever. When I want to get out of my, um, out of, off of Thirty-S, Thirty-Fifth Street onto Chandler, it's an extremely long wait to be able to take a left turn, or I can take a right turn and go around the block to try and get, to get out of that neighborhood. So I believe that the way the design is set up, it's going to create traffic issues, which I'm assuming what will happen is that the speed limit on Chandler will be reduced from thirty-five to twenty-five or thirty, who knows? What my concerns are, both traffic-wise and safety-wise, is that there are other options for redesigning. I understand the city of Bellevue needs tax dollars and that right now that property is, is providing no revenue to the city. I get that. We need affordable housing. But at the same time, I don't believe duplexes are the right solution and I don't believe that two, and, and entrance and an exit very close to each other off of Chandler are your best bet. There are other designs that can be done and put residential in there, but I would love to see it say stay single-family dwelling to avoid, the extra foot traffic that putting duplexes in there is going to create. You can still get revenue off of that property if the developer's willing to put one entrance to the property down closer to Chandler Acres. That will free up some of the traffic space up by Thirty-Sixth Street. One entrance going in, if the housings, if the houses ran parallel to Chandler Road rather than as a U shape as with the proposal states. I, I'm a math teacher, okay? I sub for Bellevue. From what I can calculate, you should be able to get twelve properties in that area instead of the thirty-eight that are proposed. There are other designs and keeping them as, they can still be small houses that are affordable to the general public, which can't like shell out the two-hundred grand for a house right now. You can get people in there who can afford those houses, but there'll be single-family dwellings. You won't be packing in so much more foot traffic into an area that's already changing in safety and all the other things that are happening to that neighborhood. I want to stay there. My house is paid for. I could sell. I could move anywhere. I want to stay where I'm at. And I know there's other people in the neighborhood that want to stay there, but you're gonna lose some good residents. And I know my neighbor right next door and the one diagonal from me are feeling the same thing I'm feeling and you're gonna lose good residents.
All right, thank you, uh, for coming forward. Let's remind the public, I, I didn't announce it, so I'm giving you, I gave you a little extra time, but if you can hold it to five minutes when you come up, that'd be great. I'm gonna, um, uh, I'm gonna let Tammy answer a couple of questions here real quick, but just to address the, the car pirating, for lack of a better term, I mean, that is something that's not to your neighborhood. It's, it's Bellevue-wide and it's metro-wide. It's, it's what they're doing now, but Tammy, on the, uh, uh, just kind of go through the process of how, uh, you know, we look at the traffic design.
I'll address a couple of things. So even though the zoning request is a duplex residential request, that's not what the developer is doing. Um, he is in fact doing single-family residences. It's just on a little bit smaller lots, so it's a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. None of these lots will be big enough to allow for a duplex, so it will in fact be single-family residential. These lots will be extremely compatible with your neighborhood to the north. They'll be similar sized, um, some of them probably a little bit larger, um, but it's very similar to the existing development that's already in the neighborhood. As far as access goes, this is a very difficult piece of property to develop. It's small, has some topography issues, some drainage issues. When looking at the configuration, um, the developer's engineer and staff felt that the U-shaped, um, configuration through the development was most appropriate. We do look at things like traffic when the developer comes in typically. These applications are reviewed for months before they ever come before public hearing, so one of the things we look at is we look at the classification of West Chandler Road, what it's designed to handle as far as traffic, and then we also look at the size of the development. Um, West Chandler Road is classified as an arterial street, so in theory, adding thirty-eight houses is not a major impact to that street. It's designed to handle it based upon the right-of-way width and the pavement width. Staff does look at things like traffic studies, things like that, if necessary. For this development, Planning and Public Works did not believe that thirty-eight houses would have a negative impact on Chandler Road. Again, we look at density and we look at configuration as far as the distance between access points. That's something that our engineers review and look at. There are different set standards as far as how far apart those access points have to be in correlation with existing access and where those fall. So that is something that was looked by staff as well.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Hopefully that answered some of your questions, but we'll continue with the public hearing. And, uh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant for, uh, approval of the redevelopment plan for this neighborhood. So I just wanted to speak briefly to the need for it.
Could you state your name and address?
Elizabeth Sevcek, five-eight-one-one, Clearwater Drive, Fort Calhoun, Nebraska. So the, the need for this redevelopment plan is really the fact that we've got a large piece of undeveloped land that doesn't have infrastructure in it. And so that adds a, an enormous amount of cost to trying to develop and put houses onto a property. And we're within city limits, so an S I D is not a, a possibility in this scenario. So in order for this, we included the numbers in our application to show, you know, without T I F, what kind of a return you could expect on the houses that are being put in. They're about two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar, single-family houses that are designed to be, you know, uh, like an entry-level type house with, you know, split entry or raised ranch style, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, about seventeen-hundred square feet. And, you know, the, and two-car garage. So when you kind of go through that analysis and you can, I won't walk through all the numbers since they're all laid out in that, but you can see that without having T I F, this project just really can't come to fruition. The added need of having to put in the infrastructure itself through this undeveloped lot just makes that impractical. So that shows the need for this, um, T I F, you know, and you're all familiar with how T I F works, so based on the sale price of the houses, the amount of T I F that we've requested for the project is sufficient to, um, pay it off within the statutory permitted time, uh, with the interest that's requested thereon. We are also, uh, have acquired that property that's to the west of this development that is completely rundown. It's missing shingles off the roof and has been for years. You know, we had intentions of maybe acquiring another house in that direction, but that wasn't able to come to fruition. But our intention is to take that house and, uh, rehabilitate it. It'll either be, uh, torn down and completely redone or rehabilitated such that it complements this nice neighborhood that's going to be coming in next to it and, you know, helps bring up the value of the street along Chandler Road in this area. And so we are also, uh, going to work on that property just to kind of rehabilitate that as well. It's a bit of an eyesore at the moment, and so we're bringing that into this development. While it doesn't work to incorporate the road, uh, with that house, it's still something we want to do to, um, kind of harmonize the character of the neighborhood that will be going in there. So, um, again, you know, the four percent interest rate and the total project cost justify the T I F request of a million eight-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars, um, that will be paid through the increment, the increased increment in the, uh, tax base. So I'm happy to answer any other questions if you have them. I think you guys are pretty familiar with the project since we were here initially to request that this area be designated, blinded and substandard, but happy to answer any follow-up questions.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, just hold tight and we'll go back to the public hearing. Anybody else that would like to speak regarding fifteen B? Please come forward. State your name and address.
All right, my name is Luke Schrader. I live at fourteen-fourteen Inglewood Drive, uh, so right down the road. And I apologize in advance because this is my first time speaking at one of these, so a little bit nervous, but, uh, I, I understand the concern about the two driveways coming in, but, uh, from a safety standpoint, two makes more sense. If you have a cul-de-sac situation and there's a fire, you need to be able to move people out multiple directions, but I understand that that does make traffic harder on that main road. Um, but I see an opportunity here to speak for, um, implementing bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure with that school to the west. That is a, it's a, a prime spot to try to get maybe kids riding a bike to school or to that park just to the north. Um, there's a hair salon over there. The more we can facilitate people's movement through bicycles or walking versus a car trip, it's gonna help take people from, um, clogging up all those, those streets around there. Um, and we've been missing opportunities for decades now. Um, I see this layout looks a lot like something that would be, uh, presented in the fifties, sixties, seventies, eighties, the nineties. It's just rinse and repeat, um, zoning and single-family dwellings. And it's, it's time we start thinking about some bicycle infrastructure and not just shared roads, actual like raised curb. This is a bicycle lane. This is pedestrian lane, because if I have a kid, I don't want them to be riding a bicycle on a shared road to school. That seems dangerous to me. But if there's separated infrastructure with a curb that helps slow down vehicles and it's designated, this is for a different form of transportation. And, and there's those neighborhoods to the north. Is that where you live? Uh, if that, like, those people can jump on a nice corridor and, and get over to school and that park, since I think there's not gonna be a park associated with this planning because it's such a small area. So let's facilitate that movement of people, whether you own a car or not, um, and help encourage people to get outside more instead of trapped in their little single-family dwelling, jumping in their car, driving to work, driving to drop off their kids, driving to the gym. Like, let's, let's get people out and about and give them those resources. And I'll give an example. Today I rode my bike up here and there wasn't even a, uh, place to chain my bike. So we need to start thinking about how to make the infrastructure more friendly for people on other modes of transportation, because if you build it, people will use it. It's induced demand. And that works for adding another lane to a, to a road or adding a bicycle infrastructure. If you make it, people will start to use it if it's good services. So that's all I had to say about that, um, for now. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Yep, thank you for coming up. Any questions for Luke? All right.
All right, thank you.
Public hearing still open? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding fifteen B? Anybody else would like to speak? Fifteen B, please come up. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Do have a question, um, Maybe Don was going, Councilman Prester was going there. But we, the city does have some, we're moving a little bit towards that, that paradigm. But maybe I'll let Councilman Prester ask his question first, see if it repeats mine.
I can comment a little bit on our complete streets ordinance and our attempts to work in developments to provide lanes for bicycles and pedestrians. We've got a ways to go because we're a catch-up. And at this point, we do have that as a part of our planning. It is a requirement in new developments. And I'm gonna, my question was going to be about this development and that particular intersection. Because currently, during peak times, the traffic is backed up from Thirty-Sixth Street for well over two blocks easily and sometimes even farther. So, that intersection is currently difficult to get to. If folks coming out of this area are wanting to turn and go east, it won't be too difficult. But if they try to go west, they could be waiting for a long, long time. That four-way stop there and the four-way stop over on Thirty-Sixth and Harrison are a real struggle. I had contacted the city myself twenty-five years more ago before Walgreens went in to try and get a turning lane on Thirty-Sixth and Harrison. And there was space there, it could have been done, but that's not easy to do. My, my question is, is there going to be some kind of access sidewalks? And for the students going back and forth to Gilder School, it is dangerous. They don't have sidewalks, it's a wide shoulder and you're right in traffic on the asphalt. So, I, I think the traffic issues are very legitimate and I'm interested in hearing what we've found if we're thinking this isn't gonna be a problem.
Sure, let me address the complete streets. So, definitely that's something that we look at with each development, I would agree, we have a ways to go. This one was tricky. I think personally, we have a bigger issue with West Chandler Road because we have open ditches. So, we currently don't have the means to have a sidewalk or trail down Chandler Road. So we don't have that access or that safe path for, you know, walkability, perhaps biking. I, I think that's a bigger issue the city is going to have to tackle. Obviously, this development will have a sidewalk. Typically, we require some sort of trail connection, things of that nature. Again, this is a little bit different layout because it is so small, we're talking about a parcel that's just under ten acres. And again, based on topography and access, there's not a, there, staff felt there wasn't a good option for a trail within this development, but that's not to say that, again, we don't have some work to do along West Chandler Road at some point in the future. Because right now it is just open ditch, it's, it's, it's not feasible to have that infrastructure there at this point. So that's something that we will need to look at. As far as traffic, I guess staff felt, you know, if we had a hundred lot subdivision or a two-hundred lot subdivision, obviously, that's gonna trigger a big concern for us. We looked at thirty-eight lots, single-family, again Chandler is a arterial street. That's how it's categorized, so in engineering terms, it's able to take on that additional development that we have in front of us. That's not to say we can't take a closer look at intersection of Thirty-Sixth and West Chandler Road. You know, if there's, if there's backup at peak hour or something like that, that's, that's an issue that the city can look at as well. Particularly if this development is approved and moved forward, that's something that we keep an eye on because those traffic patterns continuously, continuously change. And so that's something that Planning and Public Works is cognizant of. But when we looked at this, the thought was thirty-eight units in and of themselves would not necessarily trigger a huge traffic concern for this particular stretch of road.
And under normal conditions, but during peak times, I think is good to assess that area. It, it is, as was demonstrated, or at least spoken of, it, it gets backed up and it's pretty difficult getting through there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Welch?
I just wanna make a comment, when I heard that it was gonna be two hundred and eighty thousand for seventeen hundred square feet, believe it or not, that is affordable housing in this market. And that's around about a hundred and sixty-five bucks a square foot. So, that is, that is gonna be, those will be something that will go quick. And so it feels like it's a good development based on that price, especially in this market.
Councilman Cook? Okay, yep, Councilman Cook?
Thank you Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table item fifteen B to our March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch to table item fifteen B to the March fifteenth meeting. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Just for clarity, the reason why I'm doing that is, we've brought up about twelve C is a public hearing on the rezoning, and that will automatically get pushed to March fifteenth. So we'd vote for them the same. If we voted for one tonight, it would have a bearing on how we would vote for the next one, the next meeting. So, that's the reason, there's not anything wrong here, it's just, we're gonna put them on the same meeting, vote for the rezone and the planning development at the same meeting.
So there won't be a discussion tonight of either item, it'll wait until March fifteenth, is that correct?
We'll still have a public hearing on twelve C. Which, which is just down a few, thank you.
But no vote? On twelve C? Okay, so we have a motion by Cook, second by Welch to table to March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting here in the council chamber, is it six o'clock? Any, please vote?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, we have none this evening. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four zero seven eight, request to rezone lot one, FJ Fitzgerald subdivision, replat two, from RS eighty-four and ML to BN for the purpose of a childcare center. Applicant is Maria M. Hernandez, general location, two five one six Chandler Road East. And I'm gonna recuse myself, I have a listing on this property. So, that's my conflict of interest, I'm gonna turn it over to Council President Paul Cook.
Thank you Mayor. Just for the record, it's six thirty-seven and Mayor Rusty Hyke has left the city council chamber. I'll open it up for a public hearing on twelve A. Are you the applicant, are you Maria?
Yes, I'm her son, my name is Owen Menivar Hernandez, my mother Maria Hernandez, I'm just interpreting for her.
Okay, would you make sure you sign in?
Oh, she signed in, yep.
Okay, so we're gonna open up a public hearing, is there anything you'd like to say and then we'll, if other people want to speak?
This is my first time being here with my mother, she is a business owner of childcare. I help her with all the documents and certificates, certifications and with that being said, I am here to interpret her because she wants to open up the lot to build a building there for a daycare center. She wants to expand her business. She has her license for childcare and she just wants to be able to provide cheap daycare services for the community. And, you know, she's a, she's just trying, you know, bring positivity to the community and, you know, some people can't afford to be able to have their kids taken care of, so she provides, you know, good childcare services.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna open up, see if anybody else wants to speak.
Okay.
Why don't you stay, stay up to, up at the podium unless someone else wants to speak? Would anybody else like to speak for or against item number twelve A? Alright, I, I have a few questions I'd like to ask. I, I talked to your mother a couple weeks ago through an interpreter, does she remember that conversation? And I just wanna ask you a couple questions. She does run a daycare center in Omaha?
Yes.
And I think she told me she had either been at that location or totally has about eleven years of experience in daycare.
Yes.
And she had indicated to me at the new site on Chandler, she'd like to be able to take care of, of about a hundred and fifty kids.
Yes.
And that's still correct?
Yes.
And then she said, the hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, about five AM to nine PM.
Correct.
Is that still correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then we did talk about maybe a fence or something around there, she said there would be a playground area that would probably have a fenced-in area for the kids.
Because it's like so close to the intersection and she obviously doesn't want the kids to run out, so she has drawn up all the blueprints to have an enclosed environment for the, for the building and all, you know, the playground for the kids to run around.
Okay.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions or anything? Councilmember Welch?
So, the daycare that you have now, how many children are at that daycare?
Doce.
Twelve.
De day.
During daytime.
Okay, and Councilman Cook, do I understand that the purpose of this is to rezone, but there's still different things they have to go through to actually get the daycare approved? I mean, is that, am I hearing that correct Tammy?
So this is for a request to rezone, which would rezone it to a neighborhood business zoning, which is the most restrictive commercial zoning we have, that would allow for a commercial daycare center. So, this would be the first step in the process. Then Ms. Hernandez would have to come in and go through the building permit process if she were approved for the zoning. So, any type of building that she's doing would not need further public hearing or city council approval, but it would still require approval through that building permit process.
So it would go through the strictness of our planning department and our permits and inspections?
Correct, permits, inspections, fire, public works, planning, and then all the trades would be looking at it.
So if, if neighbors had a concern about traffic or anything like that, that would be addressed in that procedure?
Not necessarily neighbors because there would be no public hearing.
Understand, no, but I'm saying if neighbors have concerns about the traffic, there would be possibly, public works would look into the traffic study or fire.
Right, so what would happen is at the time a building permit is submitted, based on the proposed building and proposed occupancy, that's something that staff would look at. So, for example, when public works reviews it, if they had concerns about traffic, a traffic study could be required at that time. So, yes, that would all be reviewed during that building permit process and it would have to be, you know, approved satisfactory to staff's requirements.
Okay, perfect, you must have a lot of kids that wanna come to a daycare if you're going from twelve to hopefully to a hundred and fifty.
Yes, she is very popular in South Omaha. A lot of the guys that I went to high school with, she takes care of all their kids, all my friends, yeah. So, she wants to expand her business and she's doing a real good job and I would just interpret for her because she's the language barrier.
No worries.
Yeah, I go, I go with her to all the classes, the CPR, the safety training. So, I'm just, I want her to, you know, move forward with her business and expand.
Happy to see a woman entrepreneur.
Councilmember Prester?
Thank you, Council President Cook. Thank you for considering the business and for being entrepreneurial. And thank you for helping your mom, it's nice to see families together. We received some concerns from some people in the area, so maybe you could address. One of them is staff parking. Their concern I think is how many additional cars are coming? How many people will be there for additional parking and how many onsite parking spaces might you have?
If I might jump in, so zoning would require that for a daycare facility, there'd be one space per three hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area plus three spaces for vehicles of the operation. So they'd have to have the three spaces plus the one for three fifty square feet.
All of the parking would have to meet current zoning requirements.
Correct, and it would have to be, it would have to be on the same property, on the same lot.
On street, okay, thank you. There's traffic concerns being so close to the Quick Shop and that area getting kinda congested, particularly they noted when the trains are going through and traffic can't get through. So, is the only entry going to be on Chandler Road East?
The way the property and the lot is set up, how the zoning would be and where the building would be built, it's just, yeah, it would be on Chandler, on the same entrance where the QT is, gas station, yeah, that would be the only way. Because there's another, there's a mechanic shop that's right there and then behind that, there's a car wash and then there's a neighborhood. So, the only entrance would be on Chandler Road, yes.
Okay, and the fencing you, you addressed partially. One, one of the people that resides behind the property to the north is wondering about more of a privacy fence. Could you talk about what kind of fencing you were thinking of for around it?
Depending on what the neighborhood would want, if privacy fence would be necessary just to keep the privacy and, you know, kids are allowed and just to keep everybody happy if that would need be. It would really be up to how the, 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 the blueprints of the zoning would lay out. More than likely, it would be like a fenced-in, privacy fence, playground sort of deal. Just for the simple fact we wouldn't want the kids to run out to the street.
Sure.
It'd be a lot safer and they wouldn't be able to climb over, kick some other balls, you know, usually play on the back. So, yeah, more than likely it would be pretty high fence, so just for safety concerns.
Okay. And the, the only other issues were lights and late night, people coming and going that were a concern. And then noise later at night too. Do you have any suggestions on how you will handle keeping the noise down and the lights from encroaching?
After a certain hour, we don't really plan on letting the kids be outside playing just for the simple fact that, I mean, we would want the kids to get sick, especially now with the whole quarantine. We would try to keep them indoors for much of the night, mo-most of the night, you know, just to get them on a regular bedtime schedule.
You're not gonna have any outdoor activities where you would need light?
Not, 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 not as much as like we'd like depending on how the, the weather, the weather gets to be around the time we finish the building. But, um, I'm, that's, that's, I, I don't really know how, how we'd be able to do that until that day comes, you know? Yeah, but. Yeah, like, probably after six, the amount of kids cuts down to like a minimum, most parents pick them up. So, probably about nine, there wouldn't be any kids to be let out to, to outside, you know? Yeah.
Okay, those were the only things that were on the list for the neighbors, so thank you very much for answering those.
Councilmember Stanson?
Okay, you had said that it would be closing at nine o'clock at night. In the letter that we got from somebody, they heard that it was gonna be open twenty-four hours basically. Or at nighttime, you'd have kids sleeping there. Is it totally closed at nine o'clock and everybody's gone?
By closed, we mean like we wouldn't have kids out running around playing and...
Well, no, all the kids were picked up and gone, or they're gonna be kids spending the night?
Yeah, from like five in the morning till nine, nine PM at night would be closing.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I would like to ask a couple things. Tammy, what would trigger, when would, when would we maybe look at a traffic study? And part of my concern is you got the QT there that has an entrance on the north side of their lot and then we got Midas that has a south entrance exit on their lot. And in the very near area would be probably the exit from this property. So, I mean, I've driven by there where cars are stacked. You also got the railroad that, you know, may hold up traffic and then once it's released, who can make it across. I've been by there before where there's been some stacked cars, probably for surely on Chandler and maybe even cars trying to make the turn going northbound to eastbound stacked up. So, what, what triggers and I, that the city would say we need to do a traffic study? So, what, what triggers, and I, that the city would say we need to do a traffic study?
So the type of business, the proposed occupancy, you know, the size of the business, what they're doing there, hours of operation. Um, definitely all factor in as well as proposed access. So, those are all things that public works and planning would look at when determining if a traffic study was necessary. It's probably likely in this scenario, um, that a traffic study would be required.
And when that decision is made, is that decision made, say, by your department? And then who would pay for that? Does the city pay for that or?
I'm not that important, so I wouldn't make that decision, but uh Dean Dunn would make the decision or Matt Knight, one of our engineers. Um, as far as whether or not a traffic study was required, that would be done as part of the building permit process. And that's something that would be done at the developer's expense. The city does not pay for that.
I don't know if you wanna try to summarize that or explain it to your mom about a traffic study. We would look at that depending on the size of the building and stuff.
Okay.
And then if it's decided that there needs to be a traffic study, it would be upon uh your mother to pay for that.
They're gonna contract anyone that's gonna leave the studio.
And I think part of the concern is, uh, we, we've, we've gotten an email from a lady that lives on the backside. And, uh, you know, when I talked to your mother a couple of weeks ago through a different interpreter, I suggested maybe trying to reach out to some of their surrounding property owners. And sometimes that relieves some of their fears when you talk to them and say, here's what we're trying to do. And, and, and they give an opportunity to talk to you and you can answer questions. You don't have to do it, it just sometimes helps people around there. And I think part of the concern here is the size of the facility of a hundred and fifty kids. And I don't know how big that facility would have to be. I don't know if that facility could fit on that lot.
Right.
So, you know, that's an important part of this whole process. The size of the lot, the zoning of the lot, I think it'll dictate how big of a building you can put on the lot. Is that fair to say, Ms. Palm? So I don't know if you wanna explain that to your mom too. Do, do you or your mother have any other questions?
Um, not, not, not at the moment, no.
Okay. Anybody?
She, she has a question.
Okay.
Um, if she does get a permit, is it going to be a commercial or residential permit or?
It would be commercial.
Commercial.
So I, I would encourage her, if the rezoning is approved, to reach out to staff, call the permits department and just find out the process. And um, we, we can go through that with her, okay?
Are you good?
Yep.
Any other councilmembers have anything? Anybody from the audience wanna come up and speak? Do you have any more questions?
Um, not at the moment, no.
Okay, then we're gonna end the public hearing and. Um, we will vote on this at our next meeting, which is March fifteenth. Uh, in two weeks. At six PM is the start of our meeting. And normally, we don't take public input, but it might be wise for your mother and if you or someone else that could interpret. It's usually just a vote, but it might be good for you to be here again in two weeks. Alright? Alright, then we're done. I'll close public hearing. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Cook. Takes us to twelve B, ordinance number four zero seven nine. Request to rezone lots one fifty-four through one ninety-six and outlots F through J. Spring Ridge being a plating of tax lot twelve, tax lot thirteen A, lot two Bohack Edition. And outlot B, Green Meadows, all located in southwest quarter of section twenty-two, township fourteen north, range thirteen east. Of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG and BG to RA, BG and RG eight PS. For the purpose of single family and multifamily residential development. Applicant Orchard Valley Inc., general location, South Twenty-first Street and Gilmore Lake Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero seven nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen. By changing the, the zone classification of land. Located at or about Twenty-first Street and Gilmore Lake Road. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open. Twelve B for public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak regarding twelve B, please come forward now. Please state your name and address and sign in, please.
Yeah, my name is Robert Peterson. I'm an attorney at one four seven four seven California Street. I'm an attorney with Peterson Foster Law. We represent the applicant, um Orchard Valley Inc., that's a Melvin Sudbeck Company. And this is proposed to be a Melvin Sudbeck subdivision. Uh, what we're proposing here is uh, single family, multifamily and uh. Townhomes. I don't know how much you want me to go into this, if you've seen it, but uh. This is an infill area that we're trying to develop. It's been an obstacle because of Gilmore Lake Road. We've, we've tentatively worked out, I guess, a draft of a subdivision. To take care of Gilmore Lake Road, uh, it's just the city will be developing that. We're going to be a partner in getting that developed. I know that's been kind of an issue down there with the VFW. We've worked out a, an agreement with VFW where they're releasing easement. We are granting some property there to kind of clear up some issues that they've had down there. And uh. We anticipate twenty uh, single family there as kind of transition. We're gonna have uh, about seventy-four townhome lots. And the rest of it will be multifamily and about seven apartment buildings.
Okay. Um, any questions? Councilwoman Welch?
So Mr. Peterson, of the uh twenty single family homes, what price range are we looking at on those?
Well, let me just look at this here. Price ranges have a tendency to have really changed recently, so when we started this. Melvin's properties, uh, these are going to be a little bit bigger lots here, cause they're kind of transition lots. Um, we had an initial valuation on these of five point seven, so. I'm gonna guess these, these houses would be in the three fifty price range.
Okay, and then the, you're gonna have seventy-four townhomes, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you have a ballpark on those price ranges?
Um, with the improvements, we're figuring those at roughly sixteen million for the total. On the twenty, sixteen million. We're anticipating that with the apartments of, uh. Let me back off, cause they put this all together with the other seventy-four. He's currently developed the seventy-four lots in Spring Ridge, coupled with Spring Ridge. We anticipate total valuation of uh eighty-seven million four hundred and twenty. When we take those seventy-four lots. Many of them are already completed. With this project, we're anticipating eighty-seven million plus in valuation.
Okay, um. Cause I'm just questioning three fifty, um, that. In, with these prices, it's like if you have a nicer lot, three fifty is not much of a house when you're putting it on. I'm, I'm thinking his housing will be more expensive than that, just.
Well, it could be, ma'am. I'm, I'm kind of working from some valuations that we started last summer before the.
And then how many um apartment complexes, did you say?
Seven buildings. There are four hundred and eight units that's proposed.
Okay, I'm gonna do some calculations. I may come back.
Alright, any other questions for the applicant? Councilman Cook?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Susan, I don't know if you could put an aerial view. I'd like to know the street connections. Are you, I think there's a plan to go, obviously Gilmore Road, Gilmore Avenue. I think there was a, maybe a stub street from an older residence that you guys were, are not a residence, a neighborhood that you guys. Were gonna maybe connect to?
Yes.
I don't know if we got an aerial view or you could, I guess the reason why I'm asking is you're looking at four hundred and eight apartment units. Seventy-some row homes and twenty-some homes, I mean, splitting about five hundred potential families living down there.
So, a traffic study was done.
Okay.
Um, one was done in twenty fourteen when uh Spring Ridge originally started. This is phases four and five. It was updated with this phase that came in. So, part of that traffic study is yes, Gilmore Lake Road will be improved. That will be done. That's been a long time coming. There will also be stubs out, stub out to Lola Avenue through Spring Creek and also through uh Maury Drive to the south. Through uh Green Meadows, so that's probably the southernmost connection you were thinking of. Um, as part of that traffic study, in addition to Gilmore Lake Road being improved. There was also some turn lane improvements that will need to be made to South Twenty-fifth Street. That's all part of the subdivision agreement that Mr. Peterson is referencing. You guys will approve that as part of the final plat, but. Um, staff is currently fine tuning that with the applicant, but those improvements will all be part of this development as a result of the traffic study that was done.
So. Well, we're, I just don't remember being this many apartments when we were looking at the different fences.
Yeah, it, it was always slated to be multifamily, this piece was. Um, you know, from a planning perspective, it makes sense. It's a buffer between the freeway and, you know, the, the smaller, single family residential. That are existing to um, the west, but it was, it was always planned to be a multifamily development. They are essentially here just kind of fine tuning that plan and asking for site plan approval as part of that.
Okay, and we're, okay, I just thought if they would have, but if we can't get it up, that's fine.
Tammy could, oh, go ahead.
I have one, a small one here if we can get it up somehow. There we go.
So this is Mayor, where's Lola, Maury and Lola? Okay. And what, what will happen here?
Looks like we're getting close.
Well, I, actually the one you had up, I think had the streets. I, I did ask for the aerial, but I think it did have the streets.
If you, if you could pull up GIS, it would be, you could see it on GIS, but yeah.
Tammy, in the meantime, would you speak to the Gilmore Road a little bit more? Um, I know that's always, that's been an issue for a long time and what are the improvements?
Um, it'll be improved, um, concrete curb gutter, whole nine yards. There will also be some drainage improvements that are, will be made. Um, currently you've got a drainage issue um, at the bottom of the hill uh near the VFW, so. Um, overall, these improvements were supposed to be done when Spring Creek went in. Long story short, that didn't happen, the SID didn't do it. Um, so, the city is now unfortunately going to have to pick up the slack where that SID did not. But again, this will benefit the entire area. It will give more access to the residents that are out there in Spring Creek and Green Meadows. I think it'll also be a huge asset to the VFW. Um, you won't have the Wush Board gravel road anymore.
There's no doubt there.
So, it looks like Gilmore's gonna probably be almost a center point of the apartment buildings.
Correct, and then the apartments will have private streets internally.
Okay. I don't know if someone can point it out where the three streets are, but Lola's on the south end?
Lola's to the north, um.
Maury?
Maury's to the extreme south and then Gilmore Lake, yes, is in the middle. So Gilmore, Gilmore Lake will be the main point of access in and out. Um, but there will be the additional access points that connect where those existing streets stub out currently.
Okay, thank you.
Tammy, what phase did you say this was again?
Four and five.
Okay.
Any more questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
If you'd hold tight, Mr. Peterson, in case there's any more questions, but go ahead and sit down and see if there's anybody else.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward.
Do I need to sign again?
Uh, just state your name and ask, yeah, sign again, actually.
Okay.
Good. It's public record, so we gotta make sure it's accurate.
Can I just behind my name put what I've been speaking on? Would that be easier? Like this, can I put twelve B?
Sure.
Is this twelve B?
Yep.
What was the first one? Fifteen B?
Yep, fifteen B.
Um, is there commercial in this, in the middle section here? Is it zoned for commercial?
So, current, currently the VFW has a commercial zoning, so that's why commercial is part of it. Right now, and I don't know if you can go back to the aerial surely, um, right now, the VFW, the, it's a series of unplatted tax lots. The VFW sits across property lines. It's somewhat of a mess. So this will actually clean that up for them. Um, the developer's going to grant them an easement so that they will have full use of their lake property. Um, but we are, they are going to maintain their commercial zoning since they've always had it. Um, so that's, that's why there's a commercial zoning piece to it. It's specifically for the VFW. It's not for the actual Melvin Sudbeck development.
And the VFW is expected to stay there indefinitely?
We hope so, yes.
Okay, well, I was excited to see commercial that close to such a heavy um, density area. Cause that's what we need to, again, facilitate um, more walking trips and stuff. And with that uh high school directly across that major road there. Beautiful, perfect example for a pedestrian or bicycle bridge to take all those high school students living in all of that housing. To the west, all this high density housing, make those trips walkable, bikeable. You're cutting all that traffic out on all those roads leading down and around. So like, thinking about those kinds of things, super important as a younger person looking for a house someday. That's the thing that's gonna attract me to a spot. So this higher density, absolutely. I hope you guys approve it. I like to see it, like start thinking more like that and you've got somebody looking to stay in town longer, so.
Luke, would you state your name and address?
Oh, yeah, Luke Schrour, uh, fourteen fourteen Inglewood Drive.
Okay, appreciate it. Might have a job for you on a committee here one of these days.
I might run for one of these seats someday, we'll see. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak uh regarding twelve B? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding twelve B, please come forward. Seeing nobody else, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, twelve B one, oh, I'm sorry, the third reading will be, on twelve B will be March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six PM. Uh, twelve B one, request to pre- preliminary plat, lots one five four through one nine six and outlots F through J. Spring Ridge, and uh, just reading that, there's no action required. Twelve C, ordinance number four zero eight zero, request to rezone lots one through thirty-eight and outlot A. Chandler Creek being a plating of tax lot H two located in the southwest quarter of section sixteen, township fourteen north. Range thirteen east of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from RS seventy-two to RD sixty. For the purpose of single family residential development. Applicant TKC Chandler LLC, general location, West Chandler Road and South Thirty-Fifth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty eighty, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen. as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about East Chandler Road and South Thirty-Fifth Street. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up twelve C for public hearing at this time, if there's anybody like to come forward. You're already forward, state your name and address and sign in, please.
Doug Kellner with TD two, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant. You guys had some discussion on this already. Ms. Palm did an excellent job of telling you or answering the questions on it, but I'm available to answer any other questions if you have them.
Okay, appreciate it, any questions right now for Mr. Kellner? Okay, stay close. Public hearing is open for twelve C, is there anybody here that would like to speak regarding twelve C? Please come forward, state your name and address and sign in, please.
County Colton, seventy-six ten South Thirty-Fifth Street. I basically need some clarification. The letter that came to me said it was rezoning from single-family to duplex residential. That was the letter that came to my house. The reading here says that we're going to single-family, so I'm just totally confused.
So we're going from RS seventy-two to RD sixty, so.
Let me explain a little bit, so RD sixty is still a single-family residential zoning. It's currently zoned for minimum lot size of seventy-two hundred square feet. They're requesting to go to a six thousand square feet lot size minimum. The RD sixty does allow for duplex, but only if you have twelve thousand square feet of lot area per, for a duplex. So you'd have to have a lot that's twelve thousand square feet area in size to have an attached duplex. So, I get that's a little bit confusing just how it's categorized, but the RD sixty allows for both single-family and duplexes, but only allows for duplexes on the larger lots. So, even though it's categorized as duplex, what they're doing is still single-family. Like I said, it'll, it'll be very compatible to your neighborhood, what's existing with, as far as lot sizes.
Okay, so this is not opening a door to put all duplexes in there if they change their mind?
Correct, so for duplexes, they would have to have minimum lot sizes of twelve thousand square foot, that's not what they're plating.
But if they changed their mind, would it have to go through a process again, is my question?
Potentially, so yes, if they wanted to completely reverse course, do a different preliminary plat, that would have to go through the public hearing process, yes. Once they have the zoning in place, the zoning's in place, but if they do a different, if this preliminary plat is approved, the final plat has to match this preliminary plat. If they do something different, they'd have to come back through the public hearing process.
All right, that eases a little bit of the ambiguity. Other, this is just a quick comment, and then I'll get out of your hair. There was a mention by this second speaker about a house that was in disrepair, that they were trying to pick up that house and, and fix it, that it's been an eyesore for a very long time. I will tell you, for the last two, maybe two and a half weeks, the tenant that was there living is gone, that house is being remodeled at this time. And they are a good two and a half weeks in, I've seen the workers coming and going, so. I don't know if that changes anything, but that house is getting fixed up.
Thanks for that info.
And, and that's because the developer that is requesting this application, he currently owns it, he's the one that has cleaned it up and is fixing it up.
Okay, so does that mean that that house will stay there then?
I think that's still up for debate, I think if he can save the bones of the house, he will. But I think that it could potentially be raised as well, and new house would go in its spot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else wishing to speak regarding twelve C? Anybody wanting to speak on twelve C? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Third reading on twelve C will be March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six P M here in the council chambers. Twelve C one, request to preliminary plat lots one through thirty-eight and outlot A Chandler Creek, no action. Item twelve D, ordinance number four zero eight one, request to rezone lots one through one ninety-one and outlots A through H, Lakewood West, being a plating of the east half of the southwest quarter, together with the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, all located in section thirty-one township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M Sarpy County, Nebraska, from A G to R A, B G, BG twenty P S, and RG fifty and RS seventy-two for the purpose of commercial multifamily and single-family residential development and preliminary plat lots one through one ninety-one and outlots A through H, Lakewood West. Applicant Woodsonia Real Estate Inc., general location, South Fifty-fourth Street and Highway three seventy. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty eighty-one, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fifty-fourth Street and Highway three seventy. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I'll open the public hearing on twelve D, so please state your name and address.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Woodsonia. With me today from Woodsonia is Mitch Holan, also with me today is Brad Heike of TD two, the consulting engineers on this particular project. So, this development is a hundred and nine acres, it's located at Fifty-fourth and Highway three seventy. There's a lot going on with the zoning, so I thought maybe we could pull up that one zoning map, so you can kind of see where the various zoning classifications are.
That one?
There you go. Now, now you can see the, the various zoning classifications, although I'm somewhat colorblind, so this will be fun. The, there are ten commercial lots that are shown, they're, they're in white along Highway three seventy at the north end of the development, right along Highway three seventy with Fifty-fourth Street coming through the middle. On the right, right side or the east side is the current Green Life facility that is going to be rezoned residential ag to maintain their current facility and current use on that particular property. Immediately to the west are two lots that will be rezoned to multifamily with a planned subdivision. So, site plan review and approval will come at a later date, there's nothing really planned for these two lots at this point, so they're just kind of earmarked for multifamily housing. And then just south, you see the, I think this is purple maybe color that goes across, that's sixty-three lots that are RG fifty, and they're both on the, there's a few on the east side of Fifty-fourth Street and then also on the west side of Fifty-fourth Street. And then further to the south is the RS seventy-two area, and there's a hundred and fifteen of the RS seventy-two lots. So that's kind of the whole zoning picture as far as the different land uses. We think this is a nice transitional use from Highway three seventy to the south with the commercial, then the multifamily, then the smaller residential houses, and then of course the larger lots to the south. As far as the projected values and projected sizes of the homes, the RG fifty, which is again in the purple, they are expected to be between fourteen hundred square feet to sixteen hundred and sixty-five square feet, that's for the ranches. And the, the two stories will be two thousand and fifty square feet to twenty-six hundred square feet for the two stories within the RG fifty, and that's in the purple area. And those will range in price between three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and four hundred thousand dollars for those. As far as the RS seventy-two, currently, they're under contract with Charleston Homes, and they're looking at developing the RS seventy-two lots, which is, again, there's a hundred and fifteen of those. Their average lot size is between eighteen hundred and twenty-three square feet to twenty-five hundred square feet, and they're expecting the price range to be between four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each one of those lots in the RS seventy-two area. Lastly, really, is just the public improvements, there's a traffic study being done. Fifty-fourth and Highway three seventy will be signalized. There'll also be an extension of the left westbound left turning movement into the development. There'll also be a decel lane off Highway three seventy as well coming into the development. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I, I know that we were talking about trails, there is a trail, a ten-foot wide trail that will go from Highway three seventy along Fifty-fourth Street all the way north and south of this particular development. And the rest calls for, I believe, five-foot sidewalks throughout the entire development. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this particular development.
Councilman Cook?
I just got two quick ones. I got an email, a lady that lives on Shannon Drive, which would be, I think.
That's the one that goes across the commercial just south, yes.
Worried about construction, heavy trucks, construction equipment. It was said at the Planning Commission that the developer would be using Fifty-fourth Street and not Shannon Drive, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And then it looks like you got a pretty wide street coming into the development, at least to Shannon Drive, it seems like it narrows down.
Yes, Fifty-fourth Street will be, I believe, four lanes with the divided median. This is Brad Heike of TD two.
I guess I'm just looking at is, as you're going out, would there be two lanes where someone could go right or left at the same time, come out?
At northbound on Fifty-fourth approaching Highway three seventy, yes, there will be, I think, I believe it will have two dual left turn lanes. It's set up for a straight through if, in case that ever happens to, anything happens north, and then also a right turn out.
Okay, so we'll have several lanes to deal with traffic.
And then the traffic signal will be constructed day one for three legs of the intersection. And then if development happens to the north, they would have to construct their final leg.
Brad, you got in the camera, so you have to, you have to say your name and address and sign in.
Brad Heike, TD two, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road.
Also, real quick, Fifty-fourth will be constructed as a collector. There's also a proposed roundabout at the intersection of Fenwick and Fifty-fourth. That'll serve two purposes, traffic efficiency as well as traffic calming along that collector.
So you're, okay, a roundabout?
Yes.
Okay, well, it does sure, sure look nice, and it looks much nicer than a storage area.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Okay, you were talking about the sixty-three lots, is, are those, you talked about the RS, what, whatever those numbers are?
Those are the RG fifty, and those are the ones.
And are those townhomes then?
No, they're single-family.
Single-family houses, and that's fourteen hundred to sixteen sixty-five?
That is for the ranches, the ranch-style homes, and then for the two stories, they said two thousand and fifty to twenty-six hundred square feet.
So can you tell me the square footage on the seventy-two lots, the hundred and fifteen houses?
Yes, they are expecting to build between eighteen hundred and twenty-three square feet to twenty-five hundred square feet per home.
And you said that'd be a price range of four fifty to five fifty?
Correct, on the RS seventy-two.
Okay, so where the, the most eastern blue runs, right on the other side of that, just to get my visual, is that the townhomes of Lakewood Villages?
Say that again, the, where the blue is?
No, so the townhomes of Lakewood Villages are farther to the north, where you're looking on the southernmost piece. That is, Timber Ridge Drive will connect up there, if you look, that's, yep. So those are the traditional single-family, because Timber Ridge Drive is that connection up there to the, where the blue is.
So when you come into Moss Road and you come to that stop sign where Timber Ridge is, and then you continue on, that, that is a gravel road. Are they, are we doing anything with that gravel road?
No, you're thinking another section of Timber Ridge. This is, Timber Ridge is currently all paved to where it stubs out to that, that intersection right there now. But that Timber Ridge will continue on.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the gravel you're thinking of is farther to the south.
Yep, and so, and then it was mentioned that the Shannon Drive that comes in front of the townhomes, that will be connected and go around?
Correct, so Shannon Drive is the, the northern drive there, just south of the three seventy on the map. So that will be constructed to serve that commercial development, so that will go all the way through and that will stub out.
Perfect, and then that, that large sidewalk that's in Lakewood Villages, obviously that's going to continue on in this subdivision as well?
What we're going to do is, they're going to do a ten-foot wide trail along Fifty-fourth Street. The overall master plan is that someday you'll have development to the north, someday you'll have development that connects to the south. That will provide an integral trail connection with everything that's currently in Lakewood. Also to the Marpala Bar Trail and that connection that goes under three seventy. It will also eventually provide a connection to the north to go to the Papio Trail that's, that's there along Papio Creek. So this will be an important piece of that puzzle. Once all that's developed, it will all be connected. The other thing is, they will do the five-foot sidewalks throughout. An important piece of note is that the developer where Green Life Gardens is, obviously they're going to maintain their business and have about eight, nine acres there. There will also be sidewalk constructed abutting their property so that there is no disconnect through the development. So there will be sidewalks throughout with the trail along South Fifty-fourth.
Great job on planning this, Tammy, by the way, and making this all work. So Larry, on those square footages, is that going to be, that's what you're telling us they're doing? Is that going to be documented anywhere, or that's just what they're going to do? Basically, because we want to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood.
Right, well, that's what we're expecting from a valuation perspective. For example, for the sanitary improvement district, we're showing a total valuation, I think, of a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, so it's going to be dependent upon us making sure that they build that quality of house and that price of house to make the SID work. So, yes, and our, our full expectation, the developers' full expectation is they build to that level.
Okay, and is it, you mentioned Charleston, are they, they're building in the blue area? Do we have a builder yet for the purple area at this moment?
I don't believe so.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll give you a break, Larry. Public hearing still open, is there anybody else that would like to speak regarding twelve D? Please come forward. One at a time, you can line up if you want. Please state your name and address and sign in.
Hello, I'm Mary Lou Gallo, and I live in this development on Timber Ridge, fifty-three oh eight Timber Ridge. And I was at the planning meeting last month, I believe it was. I do have just a couple of concerns with when he was talking about the two larger lots, they're both about ten-acre lots. And originally, we were told they, there wasn't really any plan for that at the moment. But then he just said, no, that they would be looking at it for multifamily lots, which might mean apartments or townhomes or.
Could definitely be apartments, that's kind of the transition between the commercial and the housing. Tammy, do you have more?
Yeah, so multifamily was discussed at Planning Commission, this plan hasn't changed. What, what was pointed out is the zoning that they're requesting will require further site plan approval. So, they will have to go through the same process before those two lots are developed, so.
They will be notified again?
If you are within three hundred feet, yes. So we'll do the same thing, we'll do a legal ad in the newspaper, we'll put the zoning signs out, and yes, property owners within three hundred feet would get notified. So they would go through that public hearing process and ultimately need city council approval for whatever they do on those RG twenty PD lots.
Okay, thank you. Also, I was under the assumption that Woodsonia was developing all of that and actually being also part of the building process, but that's not true.
They can probably answer how much of the process they're going to be involved in. They're the initial developer, sounds like they are selling off the lots to specific home builders to develop the actual houses. But maybe, is that correct? Okay.
Also, at the planning meeting afterwards, Bradley Heike was wonderful, he's the engineer, and he allowed me to talk to him for a long time, very sorry. And I guess I just wanted on record that all the stuff that we spoke about, sounds wonderful about continuing the drainage systems and connecting the sewer systems, taking care of trees, he made it sound like that they are really concerned about the neighborhood that's coming up against that, the new area. And every single thing he said just sounded. every single thing he said just sounded wonderful. I just want to make sure that we can continue with that conversation.
I don't know what he said, so.
I know, it was private, um but it was just about connecting with the sewers and the drainage situation, and it just sounds wonderful. So my house is the one that's budding up on Timber Ridge, the very last house on Timber Ridge there, so I do have quite um an interest in how this is gonna be developed.
Sure, so there's, there's obligations on the developer's part through a subdivision agreement, which is an ongoing agreement throughout the life of the SID, so yes, you know, there, they, there are drainage areas, dry detention areas that will have to be maintained. Um I'm not sure if there was promises made about trees, I'm not sure of that, but um but yeah, I mean, there, there is, through that subdivision agreement that they will enter, enter into with the city, there are certain things that they will definitely have to follow through on throughout the life of the SID. Um once the SID, once the neighborhood is annexed, then some of those responsibilities fall on the city, but they do have an obligation as a developer to connect the sewers, detention, all of those things.
And the only other question I have for you today is about the fifty-fourth street. When we um, our neighborhood Lakewood Villages developed and we were an SID, we ended up being able to get the stop um light at forty-eighth and three seventy. So at fifty-fourth street, currently there won't be a light put in there until the SID develops more and they wanted, or how soon would the light be?
So what the, what the traffic study um recommended is that upon full buildout or by twenty-twenty-four, the light be in. I guarantee twenty-twenty-four is gonna come quicker, so within two years, there's gonna have to be a traffic light there.
Wonderful, and that's all my questions, and thank you all for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open on twelve D ordinance number four zero eight one. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Karen Newby. I live at one-one-six-one-four Ridgeview Circle in the townhouses that back up to the um nursery there. And um I, I have a couple of questions here, and I heard, did I hear containment ponds mentioned? Retention ponds, are these the same thing?
Yeah, you wanna explain that to him?
I would like to know what.
So detention is required. Um the city of Bellevue is part of the overall Papio watershed partnership, so we all follow the same guidelines. We hold the developers to the same guidelines. So there's rules and regulations about them capturing the first half inch of runoff and then um it releasing slowly over, you know, a certain amount of time. So this particular development, unlike any other, is required to have those detention areas because they cannot increase the amount of runoff that you folks in Lakewood Villages are currently getting. So that has to be contained and dealt with before it can be, to prevent it from going onto your property at a higher rate than it is now.
Okay, now, if it goes into a pond, who's gonna take care of the mosquitoes?
So pond, also basin, it's meant to be a dry basin. It's not, it's not a traditional pond where, you know, water is going to stay there for a long amount of time. If there is a, you know, two, three-inch rain event, um and Mr. Westergaard can correct me if I'm wrong, I know enough to be dangerous. Um if you have a heavy rain event, then yes, water will collect, there will be some ponding, but then it will release over, you know, the next twelve to twenty-four hours, so the majority of the time is going to be a dry area. It's not going to be a traditional pond.
Hopefully, yeah. And um what are these outlots? I don't know anything about outlots.
So out, outlots by definition are unbuildable lots, and typically they are for the purposes of detention and drainage. So there are lots that will not be built upon because they are required for detention.
Okay. Ready? Um let's see, multifamily units. Now, when you say multifamily, that is different from a duplex?
Correct, so in this particular situation, um the multifamily zoning that they're requesting is an RG twenty, which is typical of the, you know, the average apartment complex you'll see around Bellevue. Um that's a typical density, so.
Can you describe that a little more for me?
Sure, so in your neck of the woods, if you're familiar with like Summit Apartments, those are probably an RG twenty zoning. Um you know, it has the several apartment buildings, that's something that could happen here. Um.
And the, and in, with this blue color at the top, the light blue?
Correct, correct. The multifamily would act as a buffer in between the commercial zoning that um fronts three seventy and kind of the smaller, single-family residential that is to the south.
And when, when they decide how big the apartments are going to be and that kind of thing, there will be another meeting?
Correct, correct. We go through this again, so basically the amount, the number of units that they can build is dependent upon the amount of land area they have. So they are going to be limited by the amount of land area they have, and that's, that's all dictated by zoning. But yes, when they, eventually when the developer finds, you know, whether they decide or they have a developer to develop those particular lots, they will come back through with site plan approval where we look at the number of units, buildings, parking, landscaping, access, all of that.
Now, to me, that is pink, but is, is that what we're talking about, purple inside?
It, yeah, so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were.
This is the multifamily, and then this, this is all the single family.
Yeah, okay, so there'd be the um, the pink or the purple would be the RG fifties?
Correct, correct. The, the pinkish-purple color is the RG fifty, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else, please come forward?
So this is really the reason why I wanted to come tonight, was this one specifically. The other ones, I just was like looking over uh this afternoon evening, um but this one I have a problem with because it's just a continuation of Euclidean zoning, so it's, it's just more single-family development for the sake of developing a whole bunch of this area, and, and we've seen this for decades, and we've widened streets and made everything friendly to car-dependent travel. If I live low down in here to get anywhere to shops, I have to get my car to go anywhere. Um the traffic circle is a great idea. Traffic calming is important. The reason why we want to calm traffic is because that is a residential area. That is where life is happening, that's where kids are playing, that's where kids are gonna bike to school. The wider we make roads, the more it encourages fast travel. Um so when we're designing things in twenty-twenty-two, we need to look past the eighties and the nineties and the fifties. Like this is something that you could see years ago, and we just keep on widening things and making little tweaks to roads, but um in twenty-five years, uh a question, I guess, first, who pays for all the infrastructure that gets put in, like roads and sewage? Is the city responsible for that?
No, that's a cost to the developer.
Right, and then in twenty-five years, who maintains that road?
It depends. Um well, it's an SID, it is a developer and it's the county's jurisdiction. Upon annexation, it'll become city of Bellevue. One thing I will point out, I guess I would disagree with you on the connection and getting to commercial, because this will provide a connection um with the Mar Palabar.
A walkable, bikeable connection, though?
I, I think so, because it'll provide a connection to the Mar Palabar, which goes, which gets you safely over to Twin Creek. Um and again, you know, once there's development on the north, we'll have to see all that, how that plays out, but I think that will provide another important connection to that whole area.
I, I love the, the forethought of, of having that trail that goes north, because that Papio Trail is a main artery for connecting a whole bunch of neighborhoods. I've ridden all the way up to Exarban on that. Beautiful that you're thinking about making those connections, because that's important, that's what we need. I would love to see mixed-use zoning, where we have apartments on top and maybe a barber shop, a coffee shop, something below. One of my favorite places I've ever lived was above an insurance agency in Sioux City, Iowa. There was six apartments above, and there was a sense of community in that little upstairs, and there was commercial below. And I was close enough to a downtown, I could walk to go eat. If I'm in this neighborhood, I can't really do that. I have to get on, in my car, and it's gonna cause traffic, and you're gonna have to put in traffic lights and things. So I guess if you've got a blank canvas, I'm just asking developers and you guys to start thinking about, how can I zone this in a way that I can leave some of that as farm ground? Or I can leave that as nature, because all these yards are gonna have to get irrigated and, and it's spreading us out, it's pushing us out, we're just gonna keep eating farther and farther land out from our city centers and expecting people to drive to get everywhere, going to the gym, driving to the gym, crazy, why do we do this? Because things are just getting farther and farther, so I challenge you and developers here, I know that a lot of people have worked on this, so it's a little bit late, but I guess I hope you feel where I'm coming from as a young person. I'm gonna be moving in April, and I've gotta make a decision if I'm gonna move up to Blackstone. Because of that bicycle corridor, I work downtown, and that's attractive to me as a young person. We have this option and we've had this option forever, and you guys are gonna have to foot the bill in twenty-five years for all this um road and stuff, the upkeep of it. So yes, it's free upfront, but look around at, at neighborhoods that are twenty-five years old, fifty years old. You guys have to put money into those, so I encourage you, make the roads smaller, make them closer together. The, the setback limits, make them smaller so we can get people a little bit closer. We are a city, a community after all. Uh kids don't play outside anymore because we've made outside unfriendly to be in. We've told cars, you have the right of way, like this is your space. And then the secondary thoughts is, is any pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure. So everybody thinks Americans are fat and lazy because we, we're never out walking and biking, but we've made infrastructure that tells people, get in your car. Don't walk, don't uh, don't ride your bike to school. Um you have to be a soccer mom. I'm gonna drive my kid to school, drive him to soccer practice, baseball practice. So that's, at the end of the day, this is what I wanted to talk about, was this. I love seeing the traffic calming, it makes sense. It is a residential area, keep thinking like that, and I'd love to see mixed use with like commercial on the bottom, office space, and uh residential above, so that's my challenge. Thank you for hearing me out all night.
Thank you.
You have any questions, I guess?
No, I would just add, um we're, you know, we, we see where you're going, I think the world does too, but uh right now, we've, we've got to handle two hundred and fifty households, four hundred apartments, a dozen businesses, so narrowing the roads right today probably doesn't.
Well, the beauty of this is it's a blank canvas, no infrastructure's in there yet, so you can make that narrow today. If, I, I don't know what the city laws are, I know that historically, as decades keep going, streets keep getting wider, and the wider and flatter you make a street, that signals subconsciously do a person go faster. If you make a street narrow and plant trees close to it, it's a claustrophobic effect, and it makes people realize, okay, this is a tighter area, and they want to naturally protect their car. So if you close these spaces and bring houses closer to the road, it's a subconscious thing that tells people, I'm in a space where there is life happening, where there's commerce going on. And then it's the difference between a road and a, and a street. A street is supposed to be lived on and, and commerce happening. I'm over five minutes, a lot. Uh and a road should get people from A to B quickly, two different things. So our streets, let's think about narrowing them and, and making that subconsciously telling people to slow down in their cars and make it a space where kids want to play outside again and go to the park. That's my point at the end of the day. So it's a blank canvas.
Not, not to keep you going or debate, it's just um.
I know, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of other things that, that go into play, and that's why, you know, we need people like you putting, giving your opinions and joining committees. Um I just keep thinking, when I came here in two thousand nineteen, the first three months, we had record snowfalls, we didn't know what, did not know what to do with the snow, so it's like, I, you don't know how you get your, there's a lot of things that go into it, so how do, how do you get a plow truck down there to get those seven hundred people out of there? Yep, I get it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Anybody else would like to speak uh for the public hearing on ordinance number four zero eight one? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Third reading will be March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just want to um address what you said, Luke, correct? One of the things I just wanted to address is I think that if you go through Lakewood Villages, yeah, the streets are wider, but so are the sidewalks, and you're gonna see a lot of kids out, a lot of families outside. There's, you know, a lot of bicycles, a lot of people walking their dogs, and I think this subdivision is just continuing what that is happening, and what it's caused is forty-eighth and three seventy is gonna become a a magnet for other types of development because of all the housing that is going in around there. And I think with this mayor and this administration, this leadership, you know, stay tuned over the next several months. You're gonna see some things happening that I think will cause you to be very happy, and stay in Bellevue.
Thank you. I guess I did ask, is there any other comments? Okay, well, the third reading will be March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M on ordinance number four zero eight one. So twelve D one, request to prelim, request to preliminary plat lots one through one ninety-one and outlots A through H, Lakewood West, no action this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, ordinance number four zero eight two, amending city code regarding trapping restrictions. And there is a request to waive the rule requiring three readings. Okay, so there's a request to uh um waive the uh rule requiring three readings, hold a public hearing, vote after the public hearing tonight's meeting. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-eighty-two, and ordinance to amend section six dash one of the Bellevue municipal code regarding trapping restrictions and to provide an effective date.
Okay, thank you, and do I have a motion with that, council? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I'm going to make a motion to amend this, and I believe I can make the first motion requesting the waiver, and then following that, make the motion for the amendment, but I just want to make sure, is that? Okay, then I will move to suspend our rules requiring three readings, hold the public hearing tonight, and following that, vote on this issue. And my reason is, apparently we've got somebody in the midst of wanting to use this, and we're holding up his activity. Otherwise, it could wait and probably should wait, but that's, I make the motion to suspend the rules.
Good. Second it? Motion by Preister, second by Cook, to suspend the rules, and uh I think Councilman Preister has an amendment.
And so that if anybody in the hearing wants to understand what I'm doing.
Okay, yeah, probably vote on that first. We will, we have a motion by Preister, second by Cook, to suspend the rules. Questions or comments on that part? Please vote.
I'm voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. In looking at this, there were a couple of things that we wouldn't normally think about. And in a trapping ordinance, you don't think about trapping chickens, but there's a section in here that is section D, and it requires that a person with chickens has to sell a minimum of twenty-five chickens to a single person. So part of the amendment would strike section D out of this ordinance completely. And I just asked Ms. Palm if she has any comments about that, because it's in the zoning ordinance versus the code ordinance.
I, I would agree with the amendment, because currently, as Mr. Preister indicated, zoning.
I I would agree with the amendment cuz currently, as Mister Prester indicated, zoning limits people to seven.
Okay, and the. Second part of it deals with section section F, number five. And that does not allow for any trapping of any of the cat colony cats. And I called to the Humane Society today and talked to Steve, the chief enforcement officer. And he concurred with my determination that this would limit their ability to trap cats in the colonies. So he's suggesting that we drop or any feral cat community. The last section of the last part of the area of section. F five. So it would be deleting the part starting with or any feral cat. Community and then the rest of that sentence with the city council. Is that clear? And I can give that information to to Susan too. So essentially, we're allowing the continuation of capturing, trapping the feral cats. And then neutering and re-releasing. And we are striking the section D part. That requires having to sell twenty-five chickens at a time to only one person.
So the section F five is striking the language of or any feral cats?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, or cat community, feral cat community?
And then the section D.
Entirety.
In its entirety. And then that would require renumbering or re-letering of of those other sections, yes.
Which we can allow the clerk to do or? Okay.
And I believe I I've gone over it with legal counsel and uh also with planning and the zoning codes. And I think everybody is in full agreement and that this would further clean up what we're cleaning up already.
Good.
And normally it would have a second reading and a third, but because we're doing this quickly, uh I'm offering the amendment.
Okay, so is there any other discussion regarding this or any other before open public hearing?
I was just gonna second his motion.
Is that a motion?
Sorry, I got into the discussion before we had a second.
Annie, do we need to do um to approve the approve the ordinance? And then another motion to amend?
Since he made his motion, we'll just, when they vote, they'll be voting as amended.
Okay.
And then my understanding would be we've got the amendment before us. So the public hearing would then be held so people can comment on the the ordinance as it would potentially be fully amended.
So we should hold on the vote until after the public hearing? No other comments or questions? Okay, so we have a um motion by Prester, second by Cook. To amend the language of. Ordinance number four zero eight two to strike section D in its entirety. And strike the language in section F five. And that language is or any feral cat community. Approved by city council. Okay, correct.
I just, can I make a comment about this? One of the reasons that we're even cleaning this up is because in Lakewood villages where the lake was. Um there was some uh beaver activity and when they called to have the trapper come in. The trapper had to come and get the permit from the city to have the police department to verify where the traps were. And that was just a a large conglomeration and it was overriding games and parks and that type of stuff. So part of this is just cleaning that all up so that, cuz basically the Lakewood villages lake was the first. Lake area that we had annexed and didn't have this. So and in addition to cleaning up what you talked about.
So uh we have a motion by Prester, second by Cook uh on the amendment as we just stated. Um please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, so now I'm gonna open up uh ordinance number four zero eight two for public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding? Thirteen A, ordinance number four zero eight two, please come forward.
Don't mess with those feral cats.
Anybody wanna speak regarding thirteen A? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And uh do I have a motion? Oh, Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve ordinance number four oh eight two.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Most in motion by Prester, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
All right, trap away. Thirteen B, ordinance number four zero eight three, amending city code to correct section numbering air. To correct section numbering errors that were inadvertently misnumbered in ordinance numbers four zero five eight and four zero four one. And again, requesting, we're gonna request the uh to waive the rule requiring three readings, hold a public hearing and vote after the public hearing. At tonight's meeting. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four zero eight three and ordinance to amend section twenty dash fifteen through twenty dash twenty. Of the Bellevue municipal code by changing applicable section numbers. And to add a new section to article one, chapter twenty of the Bellevue municipal code. By adding new sections twenty dash twenty point one to correct previous error with section numbers. In ordinance number forty fifty-eight and ordinance number forty forty-one. To repeal all previous versions of the same and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we waive the rule requiring three readings, hold a public hearing. And vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Are there any comments or questions or on this? All right, please vote to suspend the rules, hold a public hearing tonight and vote after public hearing on ordinance number four zero eight three.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, so. Open the public hearing on ordinance number four zero eight three. Is there anyone here to speak regarding ordinance number four zero eight three? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing on thirteen B. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance forty eighty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen B, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, request for site plan approval for lots one through sixty-three. And outlots A through C, Bell Lago replat two, being a replat of lots one through seventy-two. And outlots A and B, Bell Lago replat one for the purpose of multifamily development. Applicant H R C Bell Lago Brownstones LLC, general location forty-eighth street and Cape Heart Road. And I'm gonna go ahead and read items fourteen A one. Request to preliminary plat lots one through sixty-three and outlots A through C, Bell Lago replat two. And fourteen A two, request to final plat lots one through sixty-three and outlots A through C. Bell Lago replat two. Uh I'm gonna open the public hearing for all three of those uh items. So please state your name and address and sign in.
Good evening. Mark Westergaard with E and A Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road. And Larry Jobin is here also. Uh we both represent the owner H R C Bell Lago Brownstones. Which is a Hubble company, formerly Borah Young, if uh provides any clarity for you. Um so this is a request you don't hear very often uh from a developer. We started out with an apartment complex on that eight acres at forty-eighth and and Cape Heart. And uh we changed that to seventy-three units and now we're back at sixty-three units. And so uh we've come down in size and the reason is that it's a, it was a site that when we we tried to do more units on there. We ran into a a lot of issues with sanitary sewer, uh needing a lift station. We ran into grading problems and needing retaining walls and it just became a very expensive site. And so um got down to the point where uh what you see is what what is in front of is in front of the council this evening. Uh there's a variety of residential types in there. Uh there are some fourplexes, there are some duplexes. And then there's a product that Hubble calls their midtown product that is a uh which is right up against uh Longwood Road. Um that is a three-story product, but it it sits down from the road a little ways. And uh um it's just kind of a unique, more of an urban type product. So we think this is a good, good match for this site. Uh planning commission recommended approval. Um these are rather affordable houses cuz they're fairly fairly narrow and fairly deep. Um the fourplexes have two-story units in the middle and then they have ranch units on the outside. So they're they're kind of an attractive looking uh fourplex. Um the duplexes are called charleston's. They're uh they're ranch duplexes and and also pretty attractive and then the midtown product. So um worked with staff on this and I think we've got everything worked out. It's a. Um this is an economical thing to do here and it fits for the site. So be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
How much do you consider affordable? Because I don't know anymore.
Well, it's uh some of these units probably start in the two seventy range and and probably go up to about the three fifty range. And they're all for sale units. None of these are gonna be for rent. So these are all for sale units.
All right.
Mayor, if I could provide an update, we did have a number of emails come through with concerns about traffic at forty-eighth and Cape Heart. Um the intersection at forty-eighth and Cape Heart is currently county jurisdiction. Um those concerns were heard. We reached out to the county. Um the county has contracted with F H U to do a traffic study. That is well underway, probably completed by now. I talked to the county last week. Um F H U had already completed the operational analysis of the existing conditions. They'd collected the speed data for Cape Heart. They were getting the crash data from N dot and then they were going to um complete their crash analysis and speed study. They were also going to look at operations for future conditions to include twenty, the year twenty forty-five. So all that is being done. Once we have that, um there will be some recommendations as far as improvements and or signalization at forty-eighth and Cape Heart. Plan was already put into place for that years ago. Um the subdivision agreements for those S I Ds that are out there. Um include language about cost share, when or you know, if and when signalization was warranted. So soon we will have some answers on the traffic study and um the city will work with the county. As far as any improvements that'll be recommended out there.
Thank you, Tammy. Any questions for Mark before you, uh Councilwoman Welch?
You know this question's coming. What did you say the price range was of these properties again?
So the the midtown products, I think, start in the in the two seventy range and they go um the the duplexes. What did they list, three fifty, three seventy? Larry's got those numbers.
There I do. State your name and address, Mayor.
Mister Mayor, it's the council Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty, Weston Road. Um actually, the duplex lots are three hundred thousand each. And then the fourplex units, those are the ones with the ends being the ranches and the middle being the two stories. The ends um are three hundred thousand for the ranches and the two stories in the middle are expected to be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars apiece. And then the midtown product is two hundred and twenty-five thousand apiece. So those little fiveplexes that you see, kind of the southern part. Um of the development, those are expected to be two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Larry, do you know the ballpark square footage on those?
I don't.
I do on the uh on the fourplexes. Those are about twelve hundred feet on each level. So there'd be two, they'd be about twenty-four hundred square feet.
That's where you have the two-story and then the ranches? Is that the fourplex?
So the ranches go a little bit further back. They're approximately twenty-four hundred square feet, yeah.
Okay, and have you got, have Hubble built these um this type of thing over, didn't they come from the Des Moines area?
Hubble's built a lot of these in Des Moines. If you wanted to look at the the fourplex product, and they haven't built this exact model with the two-story and the ranch. But um they've built, oh, probably twenty-four or twenty-eight of these units in in Fremont. In in the gallery twenty-three development up there.
Okay.
Yeah. The print's too small for you, but it probably has the square footage.
No, I don't think it does, but. I will mention one other thing that's kind of interesting is cuz we had some comments from the people across Longwood on the other side. Uh those midtown products, what they're actually looking at will be the front of the unit. So they'll see a little patio with a with a step. And the uh the garages are actually on the other side. So they, instead of looking at garages, they're gonna be looking at the front of the house with the sidewalk, which is attractive. Thank you.
Thank you. And public hearing is open on item fourteen A, fourteen A one and fourteen A two. If there's anyone in the audience, you know the routine.
Um I wanted to be at least somewhat positive tonight. So um the fiveplexes, that is, that is the kind of character of a neighborhood. That I find attractive. That's, it's not that same old four walls and a roof, separated by space, four walls and a roof. That you get in suburbia. So keeping those houses together, you're gonna save on heating and cooling. That kind of um planning and design I appreciate. So I wanted to be positive, at least to end on this note tonight. Um so the fiveplexes are great. They've done their part. And I would love to see the city zone some commercial close to that. So we can have that residential next to where we work. Where we play, that kind of stuff. So that's all I got for this one.
Hey, you're being televised. So there's ten agents gonna call you tomorrow. They know you're either moving or staying. You just said you liked the house, so.
Right?
Good luck.
Oh, and I forgot Luke Schrader, fourteen fourteen Inglewood, so.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Public hearing still open on fourteen A one, eh fourteen A, fourteen A one, fourteen A two. Anybody else? Seeing nobody, come forward. I'll close the public hearing. Okay, so we're taking these separate. Uh so I need a motion on Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve fourteen A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions on fourteen A? Please vote. Thank you. Item fourteen A one, do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve fourteen A one. Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Prester. Any comments or questions on fourteen A one? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve fourteen A two? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion. We approve fourteen A two.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Eight oh eight, I must be talking slow. Fifteen resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two two dash zero six. Designating the annual s- rite of silence as a special event authorizing the mayor to sign. And I will open that up for public hearing. Anybody here to speak regarding fifteen A, please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak on fifteen A? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And um need a motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two two dash zero six. Second.
Second.
That was a dead heat. I'm gonna give it to McCaw. Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. My right ear is better, so. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Oh, great. Let's try it again. Let's try it again. Still not? Oh, it's funny.
While we're waiting, I'm sure Luke approved of that one. It's a good one.
Is it going now? Thomas's vote came through. Should I just do it manual? Okay. Councilman Stinson?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilman McCaw, yes. Councilman Preister?
Yes.
And Councilman Burns and Councilwoman Welch were yes. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the second amendment to lease agreement with Keller seating and subcontracting for the police gun range in an amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. And I'll take a motion. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen A. Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Swain Construction for the Greg Road improvements in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents plus potential city initiated change orders of up to ten percent or forty-three thousand, fifty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve sixteen B as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Burl Enterprises LLC for the two thousand twenty-two concrete projects in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred, seven, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy cents plus potential city initiated change orders of up to ten percent or seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. Motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Alexander Lawn and Landscape for the two thousand twenty-two parks mowing in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen D.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Crow Land Care, Lawn Care for the twenty twenty-two right-of-way mowing in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen E. Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal for Felsberg, Holt and Ullvig to perform a traffic study at Bellevue West High School in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion we approve sixteen F.
I will second that one.
Motion by Stinson, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal from Felsberg, Holt and Ullvig to study re-timing of the traffic lights along the Cornhusker Road corridor in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Council McCaw?
Make a motion we approve sixteen G.
And I will second that one.
Motion by McCaw, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? I did have a, I did have a question on that I forgot to ask them. Now, we did this not too long ago, right? The same study, was it? I know we're having trouble again.
Yes. So Dean, we did that study on Cornhuskers, it's been about three years, two years? Sorry. Dean, when was the last time we studied Cornhusker on the lights?
We did, we did the study back in twenty nineteen. We re-timed the signals with good results. Since then, there's been additional development, especially down along Fifteenth Street. I think Raising Canes has come in as well. We're facing a lot of the same problems or similar problems to what we were looking at back in twenty nineteen. So all we're asking to do is to relook at it so that we can optimize the signals again and make life better for people.
Yeah, thank you. Further comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the redevelopment agreement and promissory note allowing up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus accrued interest to offset TIF eligible expenses for Mercury Property Management, Inc. Redevelopment project located at lots one through ten and outlaw A, Jefferson Place Addition? Motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion we approve sixteen H.
Second.
Councilman, motion by Stinson, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I have four yes votes and two no votes with Councilman Preister and Councilman Burns voting no.
Thank you. Item sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the first addendum extension to the lease purchase agreement. Motion, please? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen I.
I'll second it.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Seventeen, administration reports, comments must be limited to items on the current reports. The monthly reports are attached. Is there any comments or questions regarding the reports? Oh. Sorry, they are not attached. So when do they do?
It'll be on April fifth.
Okay. Alright. So those are not attached, no closed session, and I'll take a nineteen, adjournment motion? Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.